And just to let you know we are being recorded, it's a hybrid session. It's on stream on YouTube. It is Monday, October 17th, 2022. This is a meeting of the self storage planning board. And as Corina just mentioned, we are being recorded. You can find the Zoom to participate remotely or YouTube Live on the town website under remote meetings. Planning Board is now in session. And the first item on the agenda is 250 Turnpike Road. Really want to bring us up to date. So the last public hearing was on September 26th, which was continued to this evening via an extension request that was granted to extend the action deadline of the planning board to October 21st. In the interim, we received on October 13th a letter from an attorney representing Butters, attorney St. Andre, requesting from the planning board clarification on the A and R that was previously endorsed in May of this year. Also, we received an extension request from the applicant FD 250 Turnpike Road LLC to continue to November 7th with action deadline decision to be reached by November 11th. I had a brief conversation with Mr. Ferris and his attorney, Brian Chavell, on Friday to discuss the planning board's concerns that the public hearings were being continued continuously without attendance. And we discussed a few options and tonight the applicant is here to let the planning board know the status of where they're at and how they wish to proceed and ask the planning board if they would also agree to go in that direction. So that's really that. Good evening, gentlemen. If you'd like to come up to the front of the center.
This is a matter of procedure. I wanted to make sure that the public hearing was reopened. But that's all right.
Yeah. Did we not say that?
I'm not sure.
So, like John used to say, we're opening the public hearing on 250 Turnpike Road.
Good evening, board members. Again, I'm Brian Charbonne, attorney representing the applicant for you. The applicant's FD 250 Turnpike LLC and their principal is David Ferris, my client, sitting right next to my right. So thanks for having us again. Where we are is we're ready for you to proceed with the plan that you've been looking at for a few weeks. We had submitted a plan, I think it was in July, and the first hearing was at the end of August. And we made our presentation about what we had envisioned for the self-storage 250 Turnpike within the existing building. And based on feedback that you guys and Fussin' O'Neill have after that first hearing in late August, we had our engineer, James Tatro, with Asment Plan Design, to make some changes. And a revised site plan was submitted to you on August 31st. And that's what we're asking for you to proceed with tonight. In the time since August 31st, as Corina said, Fussin' O'Neill has given further feedback, which I would call mainly issue spotting and noting a few waivers that have been requested. The Conservation Commission sent a letter, again, just noting a couple of items, but no real concerns that should inhibit this board acting on a site plan. You all asked for feedback from the Board of Health and the Health Director did share that with email, by email, saying that the existing septic system is more than sufficient to accommodate self-storage use. And that's it. We were working on some things on our end, but the plan itself, site plan, has not changed and we don't think that it needs to with what we have envisioned for the self-storage use in the existing building. Another update is, I think since the last time we were with you, we did receive the ZBA's final written special permit decision allowing the self-storage use. And we've recorded that after the kill period with the list to registry. So the ZPA work is done. And then aside from that, we've had a good, a good conversation, especially this afternoon, with Butters about their concerns. I know attorney St. Andre is here and will speak on behalf of the Butters who he represents. But they shared with us especially their concerns about potential multifamily development on the rear portion of the separate lot in the south. And we, I hope, then will provide them some reassurance about where those plans stand and the role that Butters in particular will play if those plans would advance. It's a moment in the future, but they're not a part of what's before you tonight. So that's a brief recap on top of Corina's recap.
And I'd just also like to add, we did receive the email from the Board of Health confirming that the existing septic system was acceptable for the Board of Health. We did receive feedback from Conservation Agent Norris of Danza regarding issues with the detention basin. And that they are considered wetlands by the commission, if I'm not mistaken. And that what they found in the site visit was that the detention basins had grown in somewhat and were less in capacity to function as they were designed to. In addition, some of the outlets were blocked in with the outlets and I'm not sure what the status is on you. Were you required to get a stormwater management permit? No, you weren't. So as part of site plan, I had recommended to Brian and Mr. Ferris that they can speak to the drainage functioning of this project. And it is existing drainage, but it has kind of overwhelmed a little bit and needs to be addressed. So I was hoping you could speak to that and confirm that the drainage is going to be or is up to par. And then, this is the third item. Oh, in the Fussin' O'Neill review comments, one of the items was that there was still light trespass across the property line and you know, town codes as well like this.
Have it speak to both those items. I welcome Mr. Tatro speaking to the detention basins. But long story short, as you've mentioned, the two detention basins onsite have become overgrown after years, probably more than a decade, it seems like, of neglect. They have some small trees growing in them. So the first thing we did is we did unclog the pipes that flow out of them. And they're functioning now fine. They're not holding water. And when there's a rain event, the water flows out of the pipe like it's supposed to. And what we mainly point you to is this was a detention basin layout and grading and that sort of thing that was done when the existing building onsite was designed in the mid 80s. And we now have nearly 40 years of evidence where the layout they had done has worked fine. There's not, you know, erosion happening. The water's not overflowing to basins. It's not flowing out onto Parkerville Road. It's controlled like it's supposed to be. We're working with Melissa to clear the detention basins and get them back like they should have been maintained so that they can, there's no question that's functioning, but the evidence is the functioning is fine, especially since we've unblocked them.
Do you plan to repay?
No, we don't have any plans to repay.
And then, I believe that one of the criteria for the Conservation Commission also was that you would be submitting a notice of intent for that work.
Yes, for the detention basin.
Right. Do you have a timeframe for that?
As soon as possible. James is working on it. So I would say days, not even weeks. It'll be submitted. And then in terms of light trespass, the light trespass that rains is in two areas. One is to the west, the Eagle Leasing parcel. And it's a matter of five to 10 feet on uphill slope between the property line and offensive there. So it's negligible at best for light trespass. And the slight bit of trespassing to the south is onto our southern portion and it's minimal. So there's light trespass happening, but it's very, very minimal. In fact, there's actually light trespass if you wish to call it that, happening onto Route 9. But Fussin' O'Neill doesn't note that.
Because the criteria is different for orange.
But still, I mean, are we going to be concerned with trespassing?
I think there's exception. They're in the bylaw. The code allows for spill onto the street. The other thing that I had brought up was the planning board had comments regarding landscaping on the property. And then he recommended maybe make sure you look, see what those questions were.
As I recall, it was just to note, I think that Juniper had been removed. There was something about Barbary.
Yeah. Again, James Tatro for Asment Plan Design. There was also a question that the very first site plan had called for leaving Barbary and basic species in place. And that was noted, I think, by one or more of the board members. And that was changed on the revised version of the site plan to say that that has to be removed. It was in one of the landscape divots of a larger parking lot on the lower level.
So I just wanted to point out some of the concerns that I conveyed in the interim as the process as we were continuing. So those that got lost.
Yeah.
I just wanted to be clear that I, that you were aware of those.
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Mills.
So just to be clear, there's not going to be any additional outside storage buildings or in the parking lot?
Not as part of this plan. If there would be, which we continue to think about, but we're not upset that that'll happen, that there will be any new construction on the eastern parking lot. We understand that will take some stormwater analysis and a new stormwater plan and site plan revision. And there'd be a whole process associated with that.
And the lighting plan for probably that parking area for nighttime lighting, 24 hours or?
I think as a matter of security, it would be 24 hours. Yes.
Be interested to hear what the public has to say.
Sorry. So Mr. Tatro, could you just take us through the plan real quick?
Take you through in what sense? What are you? I'm just a little behind. So, okay. Again, you've got Route 9, you've got Eagle Leasing over here, Parkerville Road. This is the existing building here. There's no proposed change whatsoever to its footprint. And simply a matter of changing the interior of that building from an office use to self-storage. There's an existing footbridge that goes down to the lower level, which is where most of the parking is and where the, see the red dash line, the existing septic system. And we're not proposing any change, what you see on here, all the gray area indicating pavement. We're not proposing any change at all to those limits of pavement. That's why we asked in this major site plan, the new filing, for a waiver from the normal requirement to submit a change report because we're not proposing to change any of the surfaces of the site.
So there's no work or construction being done other than on the interior of the existing building?
That is no exterior work at all. That is, with the sole exception of changing lights, which was as part of the initial process, the initial filing, we were asked to submit a photometric plan. And as part of that, we first submitted one plan and that showed some light spill over onto, I always want to say Firebird. Okay, Firebird, the property at the corner. We also changed some other lights, lowered a couple of them. One light, you know, that was in question, light spill over is because there's an existing pole that's very high right over here. Actually, I took two of them, which spilled just over this, this blue line is the property line. Spilled just light just over this property line onto the Eagle Leasing side.
Okay, we don't have photometrics yet, correct?
No, actually, we submitted that as part of revised septic plan.
It's in the revised site.
Yeah. I apologize for. And just quickly, the other location in question is where there are two lights here and here, which have some spill over. They're actually already located on the other lot. At some point in this process, we may, we are considering doing another A and R plan to to divide the lots more appropriately. We divided the lots initially according to the zoning line. The zoning line between what is industrial on this side towards Route 9 and what's Residence A to the south away from Route 9, that line actually does not coincide with the limit of pavement. These parking spaces that I'm tapping my pen on are all actually in the Residence A zoning district. And the existing light poles beyond them, right here and right here, are all actually already in the Residence A zoning district. When we did the A and R plan, we divided this over here on the zoning line with the intention, okay, let's separate these, the industrial or commercial use and the residential use. Now, we're seeing that the issue of light spill over would become anything that would be a sticking point.
In trying to surround the parking lot, we've proposed a 10-foot privacy fence.
Can you draw your finger or whatever, a privacy fence?
I'm sure it's, I've drawn the plan. It's basically around the Butter Firebird and over off the east end of pavement. And then correctly, it does run all along this side. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's essentially all along the south side, along the east side and breaking off the Butter Firebird. So the only, so the only sides where this is not fenced in is the Route 9 access and towards the other side of the property, towards the wetland and the, and will be the self-storage building. But this side, this side, and these two sides here of the parking area will have a 10-foot high fence around them.
And Mr. Ferris, you own both lots, right?
Yes.
Okay. So we have the photometrics. Photometrics shows some spill over.
Yeah.
The light poles are on Lot B.
It's actually, it's actually sort of a catch 22 because it's impossible for a light pole on this lot not to spill over onto this lot.
Of course. And are the light poles inside the fence or are they on the, I guess it would be the?
Correct. They are inside the fence and that's evidenced in this case by actually talking to the lighting engineer, this pole here at a certain height had spill over onto the Firebird property. And we asked him, well, geez, what can we do about that? And he said, well, do you have a fence there? I was like, oh, yeah, yeah, we already have a 10-foot high fence proposed here. He said, oh, send that to me and let me reflect that on the plan. And that will show that light, which was going to just touch the edge of the Firebird property, will not because it's going to actually be shooting onto the side of the fence.
So how far in feet are the light poles inside the fence?
James, maybe if I just move a little bit closer to the end of the fence right there and kind of hold it up so the audience can see it. Unless you thought broadening.
I was not clever enough.
Yeah, I'm just, do you see what the light poles are here? The light pole is eight feet from the property line, this light pole here. And I guess that this one here is a similar distance to the one to me to the south of Firebird. Yeah, it's also about eight feet.
Eight feet inside. That is the fence right on?
The fence is going to be just off the property line. So it probably would be six feet from the fence.
Okay.
All right. Just trying to think if there's anything else to be, oh, just quickly, the couple detention basins, which were referred to, are these areas, Catch Blue and White here and here. They receive an ad for 30-plus years discharge from the Catch basins along the edge of pavement here, discharged into this basin. It discharges to this wetland and flows out to Route 9.
Well, how is this different than what was happening?
That's the same. I'm just, I just wanted to explain what's.
There's been no change in the discharge of drainage.
Correct. And this existing basin here, right now, receives discharge from a couple of structures, drain structures on the south side of pavement here. It will in the future. And I believe that it gets under Parkerville Road to the wetland on the other side.
So how is it that a change of use does not result in a change in the drainage?
Because it's only a change of the interior of this building.
But that could, wouldn't, that possibly change discharge?
There's really no way unless the, unless the paved surface or the amount of roof or is changed or some other aspect of the cover is changed, if there were wooded area, which we were making lawn, which is not the case. There's, you know, there's, if they were clever enough to change the interior of the building without changing anything outside, you wouldn't necessarily even know. Because there's no change that's going to happen to these paved surfaces, no addition of them. And like I say, no change of other surface, you know, again, wooden cover sheds less water than lawn, but we're not changing any wood covered lawn or any, anything else. It's simply, as Mr. Chavell said, it's simply a matter of changing self-storage to be the use in the interior of this building.
So, and thanks a lot for reviewing the plan. I appreciate that. I'm glad you made it. So I don't remember a time, guys, when I've reviewed and approved a plan that, and maybe we have and it's just not coming to my mind right now, but I don't remember a time when we reviewed a plan that had photometrics, any part of the site, so to speak, on a different lot than was on the agenda, so to speak. Does that make sense? Okay. So that's kind of my first thought right now.
And I would respond that it's existing structures that are there now. Existing light poles.
Yeah. I'm just saying that, I mean, I could see this kind of going to town council and getting his opinion on, because I just don't remember the planning board doing that before.
If I may.
Because you, I mean, you guys recorded the A and R, right?
For the southern lot, yes.
Just so I get the sequence of, that's correct. The A and R got done. And then you came to us with this change of use request.
Yes.
Okay. I'm just saying, because I like to be heard forthright in the proponents in these situations. You guys have, you know, this is your time. I'm just saying, right now, I've never seen this before. And that would be something I would need to understand.
James and I have not talked through this, but I've thought to myself when it comes to the light spill, how do we fix that? And I imagine we change the fixtures or we lower the fixtures, which can be done. I think Dave would be happy to do that, to take an issue off the table. But.
Okay. But I'm doing another A and R because to me, like the fact that it's on different lots doesn't make sense.
I think changing a light fixture is easier than going through another A and R process and the time associated with that. But lowering a fixture, changing a fixture, to me, doesn't make a site more secure. For instance, a commercial site on Route 9, if we change the, make the light pole to the northwest lower.
Yeah. We're pretty careful about light.
I'm sure.
If I could jump in, I think it's sort of the best solution is kind of a combination because I agree with you that the light pole towards the Eagle Leasing side, simply lowering it would probably address that issue to get the little bit of light spill out from the edge of their property. Right now, again, we're sort of at a catch 22 where if these light poles are on another lot, it's really impossible for them not to have light on another lot. So.
I think that's what I was trying to.
The board members' point here.
I think you talked about the fence too. The parking lot. That really goes with that lot. I think that, I can see why you guys did the A and R, but it kind of gives us all.
Yeah, I think if that's the issue, the lights that are on that lot, we just assume rather than delay, eliminate those lights. And in terms of the fencing, I think because the town picked that arbitrary line back, whatever it did to separate zoning, probably very thoughtfully, but nonetheless, I think they put in that right to extend 30 feet into alternative zoning, which is changing from commercial to rez. So I think putting the fence through rez or commercial, the intent behind putting an arbitrary line like that is to give any applicant going forward flexibility to be able to go into another zone that the town at some random point in time changed zoning to give people going forward a little bit of flexibility to the arbitrary line that's drawn on the page. So I think that's the intent behind zoning regs. I think they would allow you to go 30 feet from commercial rules and regulations into a residential area. So. But to the extent that the lights are the issue, we could just eliminate them.
Do you understand what I?
A hundred percent.
Okay.
I guess.
Yeah, I'm thinking a lot, I'm thinking of the lots.
Right.
Yeah.
You're thinking about the stuff, the fence, the lights. I'm thinking about the lots.
Right. And so.
We do site plan on a lot.
Lot, right. So I think we just take those lights out of the equation as part of this lot. We, I think to the extent we were to eliminate those lights, it keeps it contained within that line.
But it's not just the lights. I mean, there's the parking lot, the fence, there's the fact that it's a site. I'm just thrown by the fact that it's, we're doing a site plan. In fact, a modification of the site plan on now a site that has, that extends into another lot. That's all. I'm not saying, I'm not telling you to move the lights or anything, move the fence or anything. I'm saying, I don't know how to do this.
Okay.
That's all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I concur. I'm with you on the lot concern. I don't know what that requires, whether it's another A and R or some sort of easement. But my concern is those are 20-foot poles. There is spillage and we're really strict about light trespass. So I think we're going to have to figure that out, lower the lights or take down the poles and put on 10-foot poles.
We're deleting the two poles.
You're delete, okay. But you've been talking about safety for, that's your whole premise for lighting. So are you eliminating the safety issue on the south side of the lot?
No, there are other light poles there that don't create spill over that can remain to provide lighting for that eastern parking lot.
So I have the three light poles and they all have spillage.
Yeah, to the extent there's a height issue with the lights, we've already gotten the quotes to reduce them because that was a concern raised and we actually already get the hard quote. I just don't know the dollar amount from the welding company that will take care of that. So that, that's a very easy give.
So I think that is something that has to be done because we want to meet your safety requirements and require our needs. But I will still come back to, I think we would still need to go to town council around how to actually accommodate this to lot for one site plan. I also want to clarity, are you still having the card code on the entrance to the parking lot? You'll, you'll enclose that structure?
Yes.
Okay. Because I think there was some level of a worry of having backup there and trying to accommodate that.
We talked with the police chief about that before submitting the site plan. And he just wanted to make sure there was enough for two cars to line up. And there's room for that to show them what's behind you. So at least from his perspective, that was adequate.
That's two cars before any backup would be into the deceleration lane or whatever we might call it, the extra lane. It's not into one of the two primary travel lanes for the night. But there's space already for two cars before that, before that, again, I'll say deceleration.
Coming out of there. And then the challenge and my only concern is someone pulls in there, they don't have a car. There's enough to turn around if there's a car behind them.
It's actually, it's actually extra wide. I mean, just, it's 34 feet wide. That driveway entrance, it's not the standard 24 feet that you see now. It actually provides a relatively easy three-point turn space.
Can you show that in an auto turn sketch? Like, could you send, could you email me, I forget what they call, you know, use auto turn to show truck turning, turning movement.
Want to show somebody doing a three points or?
Some, yeah, that it can be done.
Okay. Sure.
I know it's not typical because usually you can see the fire truck. But maybe it would help demonstrate that a car could, with a minimal, you know, round of 50 points, turn around in that spot.
Sure. Like I say, I'm extremely confident that at 34 feet, I'm able to do that, obviously. It's 24.
I mean, is that, do you have the software capable to do that?
I got a, just recently, a monthly membership in the auto turn online thing and I'm just getting up to speed with it.
But it should let you do cars.
Yeah. I've only tried the fire truck so far.
Yeah. Because you have to see how far they have to back out in order to make that turn. Not the going over the sideline, you know, I think I was going over the shoulder lane.
I can tell you actually from having parked in front of this just this afternoon, this is actually a cake pot burn that any vehicle can drive up. Again, it could be snow, snowbank, so that's something to be a good site. But it's not actually, it's not a hard burn. It's not a slow diverted or ran. And I have no extra ground lanes.
Just give a little bit of comfort to show that it is possible.
And then. And then, Mr. Trell, I was interested in just hearing about the butter. I mean, you mentioned you've had a conversation with the butter attorney, I think it's, you know, we wanted to hear what the public has to say, we've read their letter. So having an update on exactly that would be helpful.
I'll go through the board first, and then.
Yes, I, I, thanks for coming in, and I have just one or two questions. The conservation agent wrote the letter summarizing things at the end of September, and mentioned that the site is inadvertently taking on a lot of water from Eagle Leasing parking lot, and their stormwater outfall. I just wanted to show me, and also how much water and cheap benches that they're going to take away from that. Keeping an updated update, where is this water going?
I believe it's coming toward this, where it's in green here is wetland. And this is, is this narrow, fingered wetland, is flow from Eagle Leasing coming down each of this site. It's the broader wetland eventually towards Route 9. So I believe what she's talking about is flow, might not be solely at this specific point. Again, the blue line is the property line from Eagle Leasing, primarily into this channel right here.
And so is there any update on, she said that they're going to be taking a look at it, did they, did they walk the property, or is it, it doesn't look like it's in the building?
I, just to interject, I think that the plan was to have our outside environmental engineer update the basin that's closest to that area, and put a plan that's pretty detailed in terms of how the work would be done in a formal NOI, and re-scope the entire basin to be consistent with the way it was originally designed. And the engineers are working on that, and we're fully planning upon going forward with an NOI, rather than just working on it. And that was the agreement we had with Melissa, for that basin and the other one.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. I'm happy to see that the oak trees, the mature oak trees on Route 9, preserve. Although the key still says existing oak tree to be removed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And the landscaping, they're all non-native trees, shrubs, and plants.
They are native, which, which ones do you say are not?
Sorry, revised August 31, as that would come.
Yeah.
So the Chinese dogwood.
I have to confess, I don't know exactly where that is proposed, and I don't know the.
Let me see if I can get that pulled up on the screen. So the landscape plan? I mean, can you call up the landscape plan? She was that oak tree. She L3. She can hear me. She's in her office listening. I'm not just talking to the air. She's, she's in her office, but she's hearing us, so.
Where's it in the Dropbox?
It's on the Dropbox.
September 12.
Yes, it's also, it's also in tonight's notice, Dropbox. If you look at site plan. I'll show you.
Yeah, I, I think, truly, I'm just thinking again about what you asked. I know that none of the proposed species are invasive species. I can't, you, you add, you use the word native, and maybe that's an important distinction, because I know that after the initial review and the comment about the landscape architect saying that about leaving Marbury and one of the islands, landscape islands, that we raised the point with him that the board definitely wants to see that no invasive species left or proposed. And I can't speak to whether Chinese dogwood is considered, considered native or not.
I would tell you that Chinese dogwood is not native to New York.
But, but it is, but I don't believe that he included any invasive species.
Yeah, well, that would be illegal. But we also require native species. To support that, yeah, so all of those plants, they're, none of them are native. They're all either cultivars or non-native.
And I recommend if you go to gobotany.com, and you can, you can get some similar plants.
Okay, I, well, I'll just raise that point to the landscape architect.
They should know that.
Yeah.
They'll be able to, they can get some eagle, but native, straight native species.
And there's a side and rear landscape buffer required, or?
Well, you know, the side landscape buffer, you're already working with an existing parking lot that's in certain proximity to the Eagle Leasing property. You know, it's, if they write scale here, it's three to four feet off the Eagle property over here at the north end. And there's just no way to, unless we're going to take out handicap parking spaces, there's no way to achieve that. I would also note, though, that this portion of this property is actually several feet lower than the Eagles, adjacent Eagle Leasing property. So that feature of buffering and visual breakup between the two lots is actually created, in this case, by the existing department.
Yeah, there's a tiered stone wall on that site that probably the plan doesn't make as clear, but the first tier, I would estimate is eight feet, and then it steps up another four feet, and the tar runs directly up to it at this point.
And then the parking lot with the fencing, where's the snow storage?
Well, it's going to be in multiple places. It's going to be off the edge here, in each of the islands themselves. There's another spot over here of separation from wetland area, and also off the south side, again, there's separation from wetland area there, and again, probably some would just the natural way. All right, we'll go through things, some of it may get pushed off onto the east edge.
So the snow is going to be pushed onto the landscape grounds, then?
I'm just anticipating that the natural way that bike riders do these things, that some of it is going to get pushed onto that. Just to be realistic about what, what they'll do.
Because the most plants don't like a ton of salt.
There aren't any plants that like a ton of salt.
Well, salt, that's the issue. So are you going to be looking for a waiver for the landscape buffer?
I, I think we would have to, just for the existing site topography and layout. There's just no way to get a buffer off to the Eagle Leasing property, which sits much higher. We'll look into that, see if there's any other site boundary where we would need to ask for that, or where we could do something to, to help create it.
And you're still, on the landscape plan, you're still showing the juniper to be trimmed, which is no longer there.
That's in the site plan, if that's still.
That's all I have for now. Is there anyone in the?
I'd like to ask Mr. Takeo a question. John St. Andre, Mr. Takeo, just the site plan that you've got in your hand, does that provide any access or ingress to Parkerville Road for either the residential site or the commercial site?
Does it provide it or allow it?
Either, either or.
It does not provide it. Theoretically, this, the innovation lot could access Parkerville Road. Theoretically, this lot could access Parkerville Road from it. That's the simple fact of the layout and the, where the existing properties are.
So are you asking for permission from the board to access Parkerville Road? Or are you saying just theoretically, it could physically be done?
I'll answer that. The applicant is not, the applicant is not asking for egress or ingress from the site plan property to Parkerville Road.
And that includes the proposed lot B, which is the residential lot?
Your question in what's before the board relates to the site plan property adjacent to.
I'm asking you, does the residential, are you asking for access to Parkerville Road from the residential lot that appears on that?
No, that, there's no plan with the residential piece, because people with the board, and there's no request for that, is the answer.
Well, that, that squeers into the letter that I wrote to the board, because there are restrictions on this property, as a complete parcel. And the restrictions clearly stated in 1990 that there will be no ingress from this entire parcel to Parkerville Road. Now, it seems that there might be. And I don't think the board moved those restrictions when it endorsed the A and R plan, but it seems now that there's a vagueness that needs to be clarified here. And that was the reason for my letter to the board, so I don't know if we're going to discuss that tonight, or whether Mr. Ferris and his attorney should be given an opportunity to respond to that, which I think they should.
So the next agenda item is the discussion of that, of the letter. The comments now should be strictly the site plan and the storage.
But I'm happy to address that when Madam Chair is ready.
The, the other, this, the letter?
Yeah, well, his concern, yeah, around the ingress issues. So whenever you're, whenever you think it's appropriate, I'll address it.
Okay. Why don't we wait until we discuss the letter? Anyone else have any comment on the site plan, which is the storage facility?
So John Palmer, 131 Parkerville Road. And I am all for the healthy economic use of the building as self-storage. I get a little bit concerned about the use of the parking lot as self-storage, only because I'd be concerned with noise and light pollution and, and buffering between that parking lot and, and the butters. But so long as, you know, the planning board addresses those light and noise pollution concerns and hours of operation, that sort of thing, you know, I'd be, I'd be okay with the the proposed use.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Self-storage, it's going to be in the building, right? Correct, there's not going to be any self-storage units in the parking lot, are there?
We talked with the board about that in August. Yeah, that's, that's part of what the applicant is interested in doing, is potentially having units on the parking lot.
But that's not currently for us. No, this is units in the parking lot.
In terms of portable temporary units, yes. That's part of this application, as I said in August.
Show us on the plan.
Well, sir, just quickly, the parking requirement for this building includes these spaces and the spaces on the westerly boundary of the larger parking lot. The rest of the parking area could be devoted towards a use that Mr. Charbon was excited to, would be replacement of temporary pods or other storage, temporary storage structures for various uses.
Why isn't that on the plan?
There's no specific way to say where a, where they would be at this point.
Like, basically, you're going to have outside storage in that parking lot, whether it could be commercial vehicles, it could be people boats, it could be self-storage pods, but we talked about you're not planning on stacking them on top of each other.
That's right.
Self-storage pods, it's just one level, so it wouldn't be like three tiers. But it would be an outside storage facility where, you know, it could be cars, it could be landscaping trucks, it could be flower, flowers, I mean, whoever wants to have something stored and stuff. I think.
Yep.
That's where, that's the way I interpret it.
Yeah, and just total transparency with the board, I think Southboro is a little unique in terms of its process, and Karina and I spoke about this offline, where, you know, we have an approved use from the ZBA, and I think they were pretty thoughtful about the use because of the location and the other alternative uses that would be frankly higher best use in terms of the value to the site, where we could extract a lot more value from the site using it a lot of different ways other than self-storage. This is pretty low impact to the community, number one, but number two, it's reusing existing assets that have been dormant and on the tax books at less than a third of true market value, right? So the town spent 10 years and then assessed value, self, three million bucks or around that number. It should be double or triple that with full utilization on a NOI, net operating income basis. So to take an existing asset like this and just reinforce, you know, interior structure and put it to some, you know, low-impact use is lower car count, lower everything. And so from a site standpoint, it's a pretty easy give for the community, and the benefit is pretty big. In terms of what the site could be, in terms of best use, there could be a lot of different utilizations in this zoning that would be frankly not in keeping with the community or the needs in the community. We did a study prior to bringing this before the board, before bank would finance it. It, it's, it papers out, and it'll work well, and there's competitors in the marketplace, and they're full to capacity, so it's, it's a pretty easy use in terms of the outdoor impact to the site, in terms of adding additional parking or anything like that, it's pretty low. I expect we will come before the board at some point to better utilize the parking lot area, and we've been very clear in communicating with the neighbors about that. And I think what we could have done as applicants a little better in terms of communicating with our neighbors, and we thought we were pretty clear, but we clarified that in the meeting prior to this hearing, is that there are no concrete plans with the back piece of the residential component, which I think is the biggest concern to the community. And we've, we've hashed out and talked about different ideas that that property might be more in keeping with the community, but I think that in terms of what we're trying to do with this site, I, it's rare in my development world where you can go before a board and say, kind of keeping everything pretty much the way it is. If we can adjust height levels for the community and bring them down, the poles, we've got the quotes, we'll do that. If you need some poles, move to another side of the fence, or you need town council, I respect that and understand. I just want to make it clear to the panel that Southboro is truly unique in that your building inspector has to stop work on an interior build-out to that building until a site plan has been issued for the entire project, which means she, she feels as though her hands are tied, where most communities will issue you the permit for the interior work that's not to change in front of this panel, and then they'll hold CO until a site plan's been agreed upon by your panel. And so the timeliness of our application, I think, you know, we, we want to make sure we leave tonight's meeting with all the needs that the panel would need, so that we can bring them back at the next hearing and move forward with the project, because, you know, we basically stopped all work in the building, because we've reached the permit of demo and existing welding work that would be legally allowed in this community under her jurisdiction. So that's kind of where we are transparent.
As it. So, like, let's say hypothetically, a tradesman brought a generator out into the temporary area and started working off their power tools.
Right.
What's to stop that, to address the others' concern?
Well, I think we would have rules and regulations around all kinds of issues, like noise, or, you know, we, we would want that. So I mean, as much as they would want us.
It would definitely help, I think, the board, what could we do?
Rules and regulations.
Proposed.
Yeah.
Will the fencing have any sound mitigation?
I, it's primarily a visual barrier, it would have some effect towards that, but it's not, it would be a fence specifically designed for that. A barrier fence, you know, the side of 128 or a mast pipe or something. It's a 10-foot-high fence with slats, which will reduce sound, but it's, that's not a specific.
That's also a concern for Chuck. That's also a concern for trucks coming in at three o'clock in the mornings backing into parking.
Yeah, I could tell you the trucks coming down that hill, the speeds they're coming over that hill will be far louder than anybody pulling into that site.
Well, those backup are charmed. I live down the street from the bike and spent four months away for the smote trucks backing up instead of.
I respectfully understand and would share with the panel that I delivered newspapers less than twenty-five feet from that entrance as an eleven-year-old. So I'm very familiar with the terrain.
Anyone else?
So just a couple more statements from my perspective. So we did have a, a small group of us had productive meeting with David and Brian this afternoon on what they're proposing here. And once again, I am, I am for the healthy, you know, economic, individually anyhow, the healthy economic use of the building as self-storage. And possibly even the, the parking lot is self-storage provided we put some hours of operation and some light and, and noise considerations in, in the use of that parking lot. My much bigger concern is, is with, you know, any sort of development that happens on the back five point five acres zone residentially. But I'll, I'll, I'll stand down and, and voice those concerns at the right appropriate moment.
Okay. Do you have an attendee in the Zoom room? Mr. Jimmy Mansell would like to speak. Okay.
Hey, Madam, sorry, Madam Chair, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening.
Did you state your address?
Yes, Seven Skylar Drive.
So Jimmy Mansell, what Skylar?
Seven Skylar Drive.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank David Ferris and the entire Ferris team for continuing to work with the, kind of the neighborhood group. It is, it is meaningful and impactful, as, as kind of others have said tonight. I, I just wanted to make comment on the kind of industrial outdoor storage component of it. I personally work in real estate private equity. I see these things all the time. I would just encourage, you know, the members to maybe look around and, and see some of the type of uses that go on here. It's not necessarily kind of the clean pod type of uses. And maybe a question for, for David and his team. You know, I, I hate to work in the realm of hypotheticals, but to throw it out there. You know, if, if there were a single user looking to lease out your entire parking lot to do, you know, outdoor storage, i- is that something your team would consider? And I'll, I'll, I won't lead the witness here. I'll, I'll state my concern outright, which is that, you know, on, on something like that, you could definitely see a potential user, you know, storing mass, massive amounts of, of kind of outdoor equipment, you know, transformers, work equipment, you know, basically the, the list is endless, you know, just trying to make sure that there's something that looks professional, reasonable, and kind of in keeping with something that's zoned industrial. Thank you.
Was that one thirteen Sausage Stone Way? What are the hours of operation? Is it a man? Storage operation?
I'm sorry, could you just say that your name on?
Asal from thirteen Sausage Stone Way. Just goes about the hours of operation and the, the operation is manned during the hours.
Yeah, it would, it would be manned during normal business hours.
Not with that sound, but then a key to get into the park, to get into the parking lot.
Right, yeah, the building, yeah.
Or the building?
The building piece.
And what about the, the parking?
I don't anticipate that happening with the parking. We have a third party that would be the manager of the asset. So I, I go back to them and check with them.
Just mentioning on that, from personal experience, I lived, rented a storage unit in a store three years back. And I remember going, checking in as a man, checking into the storage location, opened my storage unit. But I did see many tradesmen would come in and just store that stuff temporarily and they were coming in and out at all times. Often times it was very nicely, right? So that, you know, talking about this storing equipment and other things just brings that back memory back. So that's why I highlight that.
And then in response to the previous question about renting the whole space out to one user with transformers and other?
Yeah, we, we haven't been approached by any single users to rent the parcel. We hadn't anticipated it. And as I think I mentioned to the board, I, I don't want to cloud application before you, but I anticipate the use is going to, is going to change. It's going to make a lot of this discussion relatively moot because I could see us potentially coming before the board for another intended use on that part of the site in the future. And I wanted to transparent with the community and I was with the representatives that we've met prior to this meeting.
Anyone else?
One, one more. Look here. We currently have nine attendees. No hands raised.
So Eric Wazer, Nine Skylar Drive, just a dumb question, but I assume that property would have to abide by whatever is noise bylaws in place for the town. So perhaps as an issue of the time of day for the noises. So I assume it would have to be compliant with whatever, with whatever relevant bylaws for noise and lighting.
That's correct. Sure.
So can you help me again with the outside parking, hours of operations? Because I think I heard before it would be, you go in twenty-four seven with a key bomb. That's the impression I had. What I think I just heard you was that it would.
The building would be that way. And I think I would see the parking lot area having restricted access. Because there's, there's no reason we would want people entering the parking lot area in certain windows of time. It would be the building that we would want to have them be able to have twenty-four seven access. But the outdoor parking area, we wouldn't anticipate that. That would probably open itself to mischief and problems for managerial level. And we, we would likely restrict it and do it on an as-needed special request basis. If someone were after hours used for some special purpose, but as a general rule, I would anticipate the manager would restrict hours on that portion of the site.
So then with that, then the, the other big piece that I keep hearing, and I think of two, we talked about lighting up there. From a safety reason, then I think once you get past whatever the hours of operation are, people will be going in, you can buy up the lights down unless you're worried about that.
Right.
If it's all fenced in and everything, do you still need the lights on twenty-four seven?
I don't know that you'd need them on twenty-four seven. I think you'd need sensors that they would turn on upon sense, sensing any movement.
Okay.
Which.
Because I think that from, I think, maybe as a board member, I might be a lot more powerful too.
Yeah.
I think that's what I'm hearing from the residents as well.
For sure.
Don't want it like, I know there will be like spillage going on, but a beacon of light.
Yeah.
I know there's a defensive light that just reflects.
Okay, Scott, I don't, several buildings already in your community are pretty sensitive. Myself, from an electric standpoint, we hedged everything for three, five years and yeah, a good kilowatt rate, but I still don't want to burn it.
Yeah, okay. So I just want to make sure we're all clear and on the same page.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the board?
Well, I have a question from the board. And it has to do with the self-storage that's outside. Because at the beginning of the presentation, we were told that's just really happening inside the building. So is this site plan about just inside the building and parking lot would be through vehicles only? Is this, I mean, I think we, we had sort of this discussion at the beginning and I actually thought the opponent was going to connect with sort of more details of what that life looked like. But if we're looking at the original plan, I don't think that's part of the original plan. So I need some clarification on that.
Well, I think that maybe Brian can explain the ZBA's special permit that you currently have for the site? And what that means with the use of not just the building, but the parking lot beyond the building parking period.
Happy to. Yeah, the special permit we received from the ZBA is broad and contains no conditions. So it allows the self-storage use, I think because it exceeds fifty thousand square feet without condition across the entire site plan parcel that you're now considering. And I, I believe that when we first had our extensive presentation in late August that I talked about not just self-storage within the structure, but also outdoor storage and lot.
Yeah, and this board had a lot of questions because you were talking about you were just introducing some of those comments and I thought it was sort of preliminary. So thank you for that update. But what does that mean to the plans in front of us? Would you be then updating these plans to provide more information on the outdoor self-storage?
We'd be happy to have a conversation about conditions that this board would impose that relate to the outdoor use. But in terms of what it physically looks like, as James said, it could consist of pods or other move, everything there would be movable. And so because it's movable, it's difficult to, through a site plan, which is of course all bird's eye view, say what's going to be where.
So I'm sure just from the point of process, right? So I think the opponent is looking to have this wrapped up into meetings. So typically we have one meeting where we go over conditions and everything and then draft them all up and then have the next meeting, you know, time that it got out to all the residents, they can see what it was. And if there are any questions or tweaking, then it'd be at the next meeting that happens. So we're talking about two meetings. Our next meeting, that, that could be lined up to do conditions and everything. Requirements on, can't stack the pods and what the hours and the lights are for the outside, which is to be the biggest piece. I'm not saying this necessarily to you, but for everyone to hear for our typical process. And then, once we got all that right, written down and agreed upon, everyone would be able to review it. And then the next meeting, assuming there were no other changes or nothing popped up, we'd do it well, right?
Yeah, but I don't know if we're, if we can.
That's why I'm just saying from a process.
For the next.
Well, we do it at the next meeting. We do the conditions at the next meeting.
Discuss them, yeah.
Discuss them, write them up, get them out. And then the following meeting, confirming, yeah, there's been no changes. Everyone agrees to them. No one had an issue. Provided everything goes smooth.
So I would draft, I would draft conditions that would become part of the final decision of approval. That's the way the planning board decides to move on. A draft set of conditions raised in November seventh. But the planning board could review, once I have them done, I would provide them to the applicant. So he can add or pose any potential revisions. Then the board could review those at the November seventh meeting and agree to those terms. Then a decision could be finalized and voted on at the November twenty-first. If that's, if, if everything goes the way we anticipate, the trespass is addressed, the light fixtures and light holes are addressed. Then if the landscaping is addressed, if the planning board is comfortable with the basins and drainage system as it exists to continue to function without any further calculation or evidence that they function, but when you store evidence that they're working.
The legal, the request for legal opinion.
And the request for legal opinion regarding
A lot.
A lot. The parking lot extending into the other site, yeah, the other parcel. With, and you were specifically talking about light holes. Or just the parking.
Just that we're looking at a site plan that overlaps with the motorways.
Right, right. And one of the concerns relative to that is that the town code indicates that you can only go thirty feet into a more restricted but that's only more. That's right. This is trans, this is going, I keep forgetting that. So it's two lots. And then is there a concern with the basin that was functioning from the entire site? Not completely on-site, without an easement. Right? So you have, you have a basin that is on the lower lot. That was part of his range that functions for the whole lot. So if that basin is used to mitigate stormwater or the building in the parking lot, would there have to be an easement?
There is one.
You have one.
There you go. The, the A and R that was done previously to contain an easement, which included all of this basin.
Okay. And since there's no development currently on the lower lot, there's no drainage for the lower lot? Or was the lower lot incorporated into stormwater counts for that?
Just some overflow from a, a portion of the lower lot. But no, as you say, no develops, stormwater capture system discharging into that basin.
So does currently water from the lower lot use the system?
Correct. That's unavoidable because this is a higher grade than here. That's where runoff from raindrop falling on this portion of this lot.
So surface runoff. But nothing from the developed, there's not, there's nothing else developed on the lower parcel that contributes to the
Correct.
Stormwater.
Correct.
Right? So I did, yeah, I remember, I can't see it on the, I can't see this close, but I do recall who was on the A and R plan description of at least outline the boundary of the easement.
Madam Chair, if I may, if the panel thinks we may be headed to two to three more meetings to flesh out all the details, I'm not sure if this panel has the authority or has in the past recommended to the building inspector at least the work within the four corners that's interior focused, that has nothing to do with the site, that we'd be allowed to at least continue or have her issue the permit to be able to do the interior work to the building. Because I think, you know, we, we have all these people mobilized and now we're offline for several weeks. I think because we've been in this state of flux of figuring out what the best procedure is. And I think if, if, if we're going to take appropriate care and time for you to review all the details, that would reduce a hardship to us to at least be able to continue. Because we're not going to realistically use this outdoor section for six months. You know, there's no rush on that, but we'd like to at least keep the interior tracking to plan. So I'm not sure if you could make that recommendation on behalf, if you could, it would be very kind of.
So so we kind of the applicant, I'd be okay with that, knowing that it's up to you and you're taking the risk.
Yeah, we, we, we have a use interior to the building. And so the ZBA has found it appropriate to be able to use it. It's just a function of, we're not going to get a CO until we've met all the criteria that your panel puts before us. So it's not even a potential to be used as a, as a site, even a preliminary conditionary basis. It's more just to be able to continue the interior work in the interim.
We don't even, I can't, I'm wrong about two things to make. I don't think we even have any jurisdiction of or any plan to review on the interior.
No.
So makes no sense to promote that.
The only thing you have, they usually submit architecture plans and elevation, so you have to understand that what's going on inside.
It's going to be less people in the building and what's going to be going in the septic system anyhow.
We've eliminated all bathrooms. Yes.
To the planning board or issuing the building plan. Yeah, any building permit that's part of a project that has a site plan. Different departments have all departments sign off on building planning. So usually we're faulting because typically getting building from an adaptive site plan, because if this happens to be an existing building, that's a different circumstance. If they were building a new building, it wouldn't be at this point.
Exactly.
Because they couldn't build a new building because they don't have their site. But because it's just a drainage and it's existing circulation, there's no outside repaving. The risk is in terms of the building. Doesn't pan out the way you want. It's Mr. Ferris's economic impact. So whatever people want to do.
Thank you.
So lighting, landscaping, I would suggest you look at our landscaping bylaw because there you know, one tree for twenty linear feet.
Because there are, you know, one tree for twenty linear feet below nine, and there are a lot of things that are addressed in this plan. And the non-natives. Hours of operation.
Noise.
Noise. And we will ask town council about the two lots.
We'll put in a chance for a question. The easement that exists for the basin didn't include just parking structure that overflows into the residential zone A? With the lighting fixtures?
The easement actually, actually, you can see the line. The drain easement goes from the Parkville Road, incorporates the entire basin, runs westerly and beers off, hits the property line. So, this, what I'm tracing again, all in easement and includes actually the couple structures that are in the parking lot now that discharges to that basin.
So, I think that's important to note, too, the easement covers the lighting and the fence and the parking structure, as well as the basement with the request to the attorney.
Yeah, so I, I have the A and R on my screen and I can see it, so I can, I can tell you just to say the time here, that the proposed drainage easement, one point zero two five acres, extends from, maybe show you on the screen, so everybody understands. Yeah. There, you can see the dash line right here, either line, I think this represents the easement. And here it is, the drainage. So, the parking was, it was not called parking easement, we're referring to drainage. Request to town council for, I am. One project overlapping into another parcel.
I'm trying to make a question that we grant the extension requests for FD twenty-two fifty Turnpike Road LLC as requested by the applicant to, the hearing shall be continued to November seventh, two thousand twenty-two, seven PM, seven oh five PM. And we will reach a decision, shall be extended to November eleventh, two thousand twenty-two.
Sorry.
Second, any discussion in favor of the trial, yes?
Yes, yes.
Stan, yes?
And yes.
The mirror, yes.
I'm trying to make a question, we continue the public hearing for two fifty Turnpike Road. Change, change of views for a storage facility, major site plan approval to continue to November seventh, at seven oh five PM, two thousand twenty-two.
Sorry.
With a motion in the second, any discussion in favor of the trial, yes?
Yes, yes.
And yes.
The mirror, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then we're going to discuss the.
Do you want us to stay here and let them drop here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I just want to give a quick history, what we received from the neighborhood and their attorney, Saint Andre. On November twelfth, we were hand delivered a memo to, oh, I'm sorry. No, no, this one, this is a question, I'm going to go backwards. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, we were giving a note, we were hand delivered memo from the, to the town of Southland Planning Board from the neighbors and abuddies of two fifty Turnpike Road regarding two fifty Turnpike Road special permit by First Development dated September eighth. Then following that, we received also an email, a letter from on September twenty ninth, I believe, me, as planning board chair, we were emailed a letter from Saint Andre Law Offices regarding request for information for two fifty Turnpike Road regarding fire site claims, fire special permit. And then, finally, on October eleventh, attorney John Saint Andre mailed us, mailed the planning board via the chair, a letter to request a clarification of May ninth, two thousand twenty-two endorsement of the subdivision approval not required in A and R for two fifty Turnpike Road. As you recall, the planning board had provided, endorsed an A and R on May ninth, which split the existing lot into the two that we discussed, the northern lot. I want to point out that nineteen eighty-six was a site plan approval, which went to the select board at that time. And then, I have record of nineteen ninety, there was a special permit through the zoning board of appeals for the light manufacturing and assembly use at this location. It's my understanding that prior to this current project, the, for the storage, self-storage facility, that it was used as an office building. So, that brings us to this evening where we let attorney Saint Andre know that this was going to be on the agenda. I believe you had to represent your.
I, I don't know if you've had a chance to read my letter, but I'll try to shorten it if I, if I can. Back in nineteen eighty-six, when Andrew Lane applied for permission to build two fifty Turnpike Road, the parcel was a little bit over nine acres, but it was one parcel. It had, part of it fell in the industrial zone, part of it was in residential, but the entire parcel was one parcel. It was not subdivided, it was, did not consist of two lots. In nineteen eighty-six, the select board allowed that to take place, but they put a restriction on it. And it said that Andrew Lane would by deed restriction and to be noted on the recorded plan, provide a permanent open space buffer to preserve, to be preserved in perpetuity. Then in nineteen ninety, the zoning board of appeals granted to Leaf Systems a special use permit, allowing light manufacturing and assembly on that entire lot. But they placed restrictions on it. Their neighbors, the abuddies, came out and complained that we don't want access from this lot onto Parkerville Road for safety concerns, in, in addition to other things. And several people from the town boards, like the departments, came forward and said, there's a problem with the safety of this area here. And that led to these restrictions being imposed. No building shall be erected on the residential A lot, which is now Lot B on this A and R plan, that no egress shall be allowed from the property onto Parkerville Road. And that a twenty-five foot buffer of wooded area would be maintained where the residential properties meet. So far, so good, so we kind of fast forward to nineteen, excuse me, two thousand and twenty-two, when Mr. Ferris submitted the A and R plan. And what I'm concerned about is whether or not, when the, when the plan endorsed, the A, when the board endorsed the A and R plan, that subdivision approval was not required, it somehow affected those restrictions that had been placed in nineteen eighty-six and nineteen ninety. I don't think they were, but it doesn't seem that Mr. Ferris and his team would agree to that. But I, I would like to get some clarification that the board didn't remove those restrictions. It was a straight review of the A and R plan to see, is there enough footage to meet the requirements on Parkerville Road? And is Parkerville Road away? But it didn't address removing any of the restrictions that had been in place before. I think in order to do that, it'd have to be a special hearing with notice and whatnot to try to remove those, which was not done. So, I am trying to make this clean going forward, so that we're not faced with the prospect of an argument that, well, no, the board gave permission for this residential lot to access Parkerville Road, which I don't think the board did, but it seems like it's going to come up. And I would add, we did meet with Mr. Ferris and his attorney today, and it was, it was a productive meeting. And he was forthcoming, I think, and he said, I will work with you. Our concern obviously is, is, there was a concept plan being floated around for a four-story building on the residential lot here, with all of the trees cut out, and all of the abuddies are now going to be looking at parking lot and a huge four-story building. So, everyone's concerned about that. Mr. Ferris said today he would work with us and consider other options. He didn't commit to other options, but he said he would work with us to do that. So, I, I, I'm somewhat optimistic that he will do that. But our first problem is, we want to make sure that those restrictions have not been removed by this board, weren't removed in the May endorsement. And that's all I'm really looking for, to see, get to some clarity that that's, that was not done. Thank you.
Thank you. So, in May, for the A and R, the approval not required, we just looked at frontage, there was no discussion of any other terms or restrictions, or we just had just the frontage.
And?
We endorsed the plan based on that.
Okay.
Anyone else?
No, yeah, I, my, there was no discussion of conditions or something on currently and waving any of those or anything, we were just looking at. We split the lot.
Thank you, that's, that's all I needed, thank you very much.
Mr. Ferris, did you want to speak to this at all?
No, no, I was.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak to this?
We have ten attendees in the Zoom waiting room, Mr. Jimmy Munzel has his handbag.
Hello, Madam Chair, Jimmy Munzel, again, Seven Skylar Drive in Southborough. Would it be appropriate to ask that the board record these restrictions, either with title or, or some similar mechanism? So that it is kind of, you know, broadly, broadly known? Or is that not appropriate? Thank you.
So, this ZBA decision of nineteen ninety was recorded. Did you hear that, Mr. Munzel? So, I'll, I'll say it a little louder, I, I believe that, I have, I believe that the, well, I don't have a recorded copy in my hand. I would have to check if that was recorded. But that would have been a ZBA requirement or not to record that. So, I know, Brian, do you know if that document was recorded?
The special permit from nineteen eighty-six and nineteen ninety.
Recorded at the registry of deeds or recorded in the town?
Registry deeds.
So, this is something that can be checked at the Worcester Registry of Deeds to see if the special permit for two fifty Turnpike from August eighth of nineteen ninety was recorded for that location.
We can work together on that.
Well, would it, would it be appropriate to ask the board that if they were not recorded, that the board would, would work with us to get those recorded?
If I may, it's a product of the ZBA. Letting us not be responsible to know if we're recording the ZBA's decisions.
Yeah. All an AR does, sir, is change the lock lines. It doesn't undo any zoning, doesn't change.
As a matter of fact, A and R plan has a note on it that indicates that. On A and R plan is a note that says, let me just find it here on my screen. The planning board's endorsement of the plan is not requiring approval under the subdivision control law, is not a determination as to the conformance with the self-rozoning by law and regulations. So, I believe you, that A and R is recorded?
It is.
So, that you can see on the registry of deeds, we also have an endorsed plan at the planning office, which we'd be happy to provide you, if you don't have any, and I can send that to you.
You, you give it to me.
Okay. Karina, you're asking town council about the two lots. Do you mind just asking him, just to confirm that the A and R has no effect on previous conditions?
And as far as recording, the planning board's jurisdiction on recording a prior document, I'm not sure.
It would be, and it was issued by the zoning board of appeals before.
And if I may, the most important point around that decision and its recording, and you know, we spoke offline about this issue, is those conditions, those, for lack of a better term, restrictions that run with the property, run concurrent with what the ZBA at the time gave you, which is light manufacturing permit as a quid pro quo to restrict the remainder of the property while enjoying that benefit. That benefit has been deleted by the ZBA and the use has changed. So, to talk about reissuing or re-recording, I think they could take it up to the ZBA. But typically, a recording with, to renew, a restriction on a parcel would come with benefits.
Well, what, wasn't the original deed restriction prior to that being approved as a light manufacturing use? So, I mean, I don't know, that's true.
I'm sorry, Mr. Munzel, could you please repeat that?
It seems like the, what I'll call, for lack of a better term, deed restriction on the residential parcel was put in place, if I'm following the chain of events correctly, prior to the use change of the office building to a light manufacturing use. So, it just seems that the use would only, or the use restriction on the back parcel would only run with, so long as the manufacturing operation was in process, it doesn't seem to be congruent with kind of the original intent.
I'm not sure it's a deed restriction. I think that the special permit that was issued is a special permit, and those restrictions are in that, are conditions of that special permit. So, I'm not, I can't speak to if it's a deed restriction or not.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I just don't have that information.
The zoning board of appeals, the special permit is on what lot? It's on both?
Both.
On both?
One lot.
So, it's only?
So it's only on, so I think we need clarity on that, is what the special permit applies to. So if they split the lot after the special permit, is that accurate? Then we'd have to understand that, or they might need to reheare it. Because I don't think that, that's, that's not, I don't think that's in really good faith.
I think that's worth asking town council about as part of the whole question of the lots, of the previous agenda. This is relevant to that too.
So, just to be clear, you're asking town council if the special permit that was issued for the entire lot prior to the A and R affects either one of the lots that was created by the A and R?
Well, the decision was made before an A and R. So I don't think it's in, like, I just don't think that the special permit, I, I would not say that's consistent with what the property is now. It's now two pieces, two parcels. We have one site plan in front of us, and I think that's what we need to evaluate. What is the special permit actually applicable to? I just don't think that's in good faith, if the special permit was granted and then an A and R and you've split two lots.
And I'm not an attorney.
That's.
But I can, I, I thought that a special permit runs with the use and a variance runs with the land, and I could be wrong.
That's our, that's the correct legal interpretation. Outside, independent of our attorney's in-house view, the land use expert would say the same thing. So I'm confident if you take the question back, they'll give you the answer that you need.
And the planning board is asking for me to ask that regarding the project that is currently under site plan, but that lot, if that's in that.
Right, because the special permit that was on the leave thing was very specific about the residential A lot. That no building shall be built and no repress.
Right, and if, and if this was a, if this is a special permit and not a variance. And I think there's a little confusion there because there, there may have been a typo in our decision. Because they titled it variance, but the vote is a special permit. That will include that in town council.
So along with that, I assume then, follow on Mr. Ferris's point, just for confirmation, you're going to get a lot either, to ask whether or not the special permit follows the use versus the land. I mean, I appreciate the commentary, but again, I'm no attorney, so that's, I assume that would be a potential question to town council as well to confirm that, that documentation is a follow the use or is a follow the land. Thank you.
Does that, does the planning board agree for me to include that in their legal opinion or something? Yeah.
And if, and if I may add, you know, was that special permit approval? Approval of a special permit or variance, because it does say both. We need clarification there as well.
Okay, I can, all right, my last question. The language in the special permit in this document refers to that, following restrictions, the special permit. But we can get some decision on it to strike. Okay. Any more questions? To make sure. So we currently have eleven attendees, no hands raised. All right. So we have all those five hundred questions for town council. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Next item on the agenda is a discussion of forty-four turnpike road site compliance.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, could we take a two-minute reset?
Make a motion for a two-minute reset, second.
All in favor, let her know yes.
Yes.
Can you get down here?
Yeah, yes. Just calling this.
Just.
You're back.
We are back in session.
Owl's not showing up, Colleen, the owl's not showing a picture.
No, I don't have it. I don't have it. Yeah, Colleen, the owl is not showing the picture. I'm sorry.
Sorry, that was me.
All right, now we're really back. 154 turnpike road site compliance.
Yes, so just to update you at the prior meetings. Bill DePietre and Justin DePietre representing Public Properties was asked to submit applications to modify the site plan at 154 turnpike in order to mitigate changes in landscaping that they've done and also are proposing. In addition, they've been asked to submit an application for tree removal or a tree that was removed in order to mitigate that process as well. So I reached out to them on October 12th and they sent me an email today saying that they're in the process of getting the documents together as requested. That the vendors are a little bit busy and it's taking time to get everything together. So it's going to be at least a month before they try to get things together because things are happening for them closing up. So I'll be on that to make sure that they follow up within a month. I did let them know that planning board is not in favor of the ways in that if it's too long, that there's consideration to ask the permission of the issue rather. We start that process that could incur fines if it goes to that level. So they are aware that when I did speak with Mr. Bill DePietre this morning, Justin DePietre responded to me within probably a half hour following up with me.
So in a month, they're going to file an application for site plan modification?
Well, actually, it says we are in the process of getting the documents together as requested. For the last meeting, we intend over a month. We pushed to get the original requested documents as requested. For the last meeting, we intended those were not enough. Now, Board of Venture Plan and Site Plan Amendment have been additionally requested. All the vendors we are, we use are very busy. It will take some time to get everything together. I don't see us having everything for at least a month where everyone is trying to close up jobs before the winter months. Is in progress on our end and we will keep posting, Justin DePietre. So it's up to the board if they want to give them one more month or if there's other action.
I'm just curious, they're going to be out of compliance now until the spring? Is what it's going to go down to? Because we don't have a plan, we're not going to have new things, plantings. Whatever, like remedy is going to be, nothing's going to happen until spring at this point. So.
Even with a modification, application, it would still be over the winter months. It would be the same.
I'm sure even raising the curb and the other items we asked for. Probably going to be, the ground's going to be frozen by the time. It's in the plan and everything else, so nothing's going to happen. So I guess we talked about talking to the building inspector. Like, okay, what's, yeah, we're working with them, but they're going to be out of compliance. Well, I've never come across this before. When we started this, how long ago?
2019, 2018, where they were asked to bring that curving into compliance. And then they were going to remedy with additional buffer and bring that curb back and do all those things. So we're with land at the. Yeah. I can tell you that when I speak with Bill DePietre, he is responsive as far as, you know, answering me back and getting things. There are other projects that are lingering as well, like Stormwood Village. There are aspects there that they need to provide and I'm working on them with that. But it's up to the board if they want further action. I can recall the prior letter if that was sent. I can pull that out of the file and remind the building commissioner.
I mean, I guess as long as progress is actually happening, but if it's, we don't see anything. And I would reach out to the building inspector and say, hey, you know, at this point, what do you recommend? I'd ask for current, but two.
Okay.
I mean, if we keep seeing progress happening, but reality is there's going to be no new planting until the spring. In my view. I don't even think there are no plants. I mean, shovels and trees, it's already having their annual sale.
It's just done.
I think we're way past the point of required mitigation. As far as the tree, as far as the site plan being out of compliance, it also been, in my opinion, far, far beyond the leniency that I would be favorable to. Mitigation and referring it to the building inspector and just philosophically, I don't, I, I I tend to be less lenient and more on the enforcement side of the boards, you know, previous rulings. We spend a ton of time on these site plans. And then to have, the lack of compliance to me is just ridiculous, so.
And just to add, I just want to say that it was the last meeting that we asked them to do modification or the planning board requested it. So that was two weeks ago.
I don't think we ever asked for it. I think it was obvious that they weren't going to put all the
Exactly.
trees in it. We didn't ask for it.
I was mystified.
That was the mitigation agreed to, that they would, that despite the changes, that they would submit applications for modification.
I think it is incredibly generous and gracious of this board to have discussion items on our agenda that are obviously, you know, site plan modifications. To me, it's a waste of the board's time to engage in those discussions. It's either it is the site plan or it's not. If it's not the site plan, we should be doing the proper submission of the modification. Don't take up my time with these discussion items.
The problem was that the work was performed and it was
Well, that's out of compliance.
So we called them in. Yeah, I agree with you. I'm just saying that the circumstances and that, you know, they had ideas that they wanted to do and then they never applied. They actually reconstructed things on site that were not compliant and
And they did even more. They cut down all the trees.
Yeah. So the planning board just has to tell me what they want me to do and that's what I will do.
So, so Jesse, you would like to engage the building commissioner?
Yes, please.
I concur with Mr. Stein. I think this board has been overly lenient and generous with our time in discussing this. I think they were given a plan and they just decided to violate the plan. And I think they should be fine daily, but I'll leave that for the building inspector.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's time for enforcement to engage the building inspector.
Looks like enforcement wins. Okay, and in doing so, I can write a letter requesting that non-compliance issue, that there's some enforcement process or next step that she takes. I don't know if we have, we have beyond that, what can we do except whatever courage and request that that happens.
Well, I would, I would point out the 2019 letter in which she sent an enforcement letter for them to return that cut through.
Yeah.
And that was told that they would do it in the spring.
Okay.
So which would have been 2020, and this is 2020. And in addition, the induction of landscape. And the way we're changing why. Next item on the agenda, discussion item, 325 turnpike road. Can school status of noise barrier wall and drainage landscaping repairs?
For the record, the fear is Mr. Ramirez refusing us. It looks like people printed it out.
Okay, quick update for the planning board. As you recall, when major site plan approval was decided upon several months ago for 325 turnpike Ken's Foods for building expansion on the east side. The decision included conditions of approval, which were relative to drainage repairs that were required, whoops, drainage repairs that were required from prior site plan approval. In addition, there were three of them. In addition, there were landscaping fixes also that are required to be performed prior to the building expansion project starting. I'm just looking for the decision. So in the decision, it was condition number six, existing drainage and stormwater management system repairs, which required three drainage fixes on the site, or two outlet control structures that needed to have the elevation repaired in order for the system to operate as designed. And then there was a gravity line that was built over a gas line that caused a
High point.
A high point. Thank you, Scott. So the other condition was number 13, repair and completion of plantings for prior permits, which included two trees at the sound barrier wall, replacement plantings at the warehouse renovation by a retention area. And then replacement wetland replication plantings where the septic system was installed previously under prior permits. Then also there was a condition number 14, which was relative to a sound barrier wall that was supposed to be determined via work between Ken's Foods Noise Expert and the Butter's Noise Expert, and they were to come to consensus in September 13th or so, I believe, the board helped have a meeting and an option was determined to be the best path, which was not a short wall and not a long perimeter wall, but a shortened perimeter wall. And the requirement was for Ken's Foods to come back, will be 90 days, with a modification to site plan with this noise barrier wall design. So we received a request from Mr. Pozzoli on, for his client Ken's Foods, a letter which was provided to planning board indicating requesting an extension to the timeframe of the condition for the noise barrier wall. I believe you're asking for a 30-day extension?
Yes.
And then I can tell you that two of the three drainage fixes were done or constructed. Plasmonia was engaged. They went to the site and they inspected those and we got reports on that. At this point, as far as what they hit this in the field is satisfactory, but part of the requirement is that we need ASBILs of those stamped and then reviewed by Plasmonia to confirm that what you're showing on the ASBILs. There's a third drainage, there's an issue, the third drainage location, because it's a national grid. The pole was in close proximity. How do you say, what, 16?
Yeah.
Approximately that range, and the foundation would be the pole, it's a national grid pole, provides power to Ken's Foods. If they dig near that, they ask National Grid to shore it up. And I'll let you explain the rest of that part. And then the landscaping. I'm not sure what the status is of that at this point, because Plasmonia was not going out to review any of the landscaping fixes.
Do you want to just hit on the landscaping?
Sure, yeah, I will do that. Sure, whatever, whatever floor you'd like to go.
So that's the update. We have a request to some things that are conditioned in the major site plan approval. There are also conditions as far as special comment.
If, if we can proceed with the work that needs to be done, we'll talk about the sound wall second and talk about the work that needed to be completed before Ken's could start the foundation work for the expansion and the other work for the expansion. And as Karina stated, they've done two parts of it. The one part that they haven't completed is because of the pole being next to where the drain line is going to go. And we were trying to get EverSource out there for a month now.
Oh, more than that.
Couple of months. Yeah, well, that's right. This was July.
Yeah.
So when, once we got the approval, we got in touch with them to come out to do it. They, they keep putting you off, putting you off. We can't get them out. We've taken another position and gone to the gas company to see if they could move the line so that we could then get under it. And that way we wouldn't have to hold the pole, because what happens is EverSource has to come out and hold on to that pole. So whoever can come out first, the gas company or EverSource, we'll get it done after they, they complete that. But we can't, our hands are tied. We can't do anything unless, and I think in good faith, Ken's has moved forward with getting all the other work done quickly. Get everybody out there, check everything out. He's got to submit the plans. He'll submit them for that, the parts that are completed.
I have just.
Yeah, okay.
But that's, that's an integral, but that's an integral. No, it's an ASBIL, but yes, it is by, yes.
So
Only those two.
In that regard, we'd like to be able to commence construction on the addition while we're waiting on EverSource. And I'd have to be delayed and possibly get pushed into next spring to start construction on that. Because if we don't get in the ground to do the work, we'll sit down on the ground. We're not going to make it through the winter.
So is the plan on the screen, the plan you're talking about, Scott, that's stamped?
Yeah, the ASBIL, the surveyor stamping, the ASBIL is the work that's marked up in red and blue. Showing that the, the construction of the inversion, the seismic of the openings and such are all in compliance.
So the next step, at least this, these two drainage features fixes would be for this plan to be submitted to Plasmonia for review and under the task board authorization that we currently have for construction based services and see what if they have any comments on the design since they inspected it and used the ASBIL. Does it say ASBIL on there somewhere? So that would be the next step of this plan, but you still have an issue because you have a third drainage.
Yeah, and it's the work for the third drainage that's holding us up. And we feel it's unfair to be hamstrung through the winter and not to be able to start our foundation work before the winter comes to be able to start building that if EverSource can't get out there. And that's why we took the course and went to the gas company as well. Figuring if we had two companies, one of them will get out there sooner than later.
And the landscaping?
The landscaping is proceeding right now. It's not completed yet. The, all of the prep site work was done, the soil, the new soil is brought in. Some plant material has been delivered and I did not get a report today and I haven't been out there since last week, but the landscape, the wetlands engineer from, and landscape folks from Goddard have been out there monitoring on a regular basis and expect completion of that very soon.
So the landscape?
No, it's not completed yet.
No questions?
My, just the specific ask. So your ask this evening of the planning board is?
That we can start, commence construction of the addition, because we have to get things in the ground for the winter. And to put them online now to start construction, it's probably we probably just better make it, we'll probably get into November and be able to start infusing into the ground what we have to do to build. Once we get everything in the ground, we'll be all set to finish the job. But if we can't get in, it'll push us off six months from opening until spring.
So the timing on the updated landscape plan would be?
A matter of a few weeks, I would say, to have the, because the surveyors following them as they do the work. And that's been, it's all been being pushed and expedited. So that's, that's, that's encouraging, I think, in terms of having that done in the next few weeks, because it was well underway already last week, so.
Mr. Trump, when did we, because it's always our Dropbox a little hard to follow when we try and look back on the, like, the conditions?
Yeah.
The specific conditions that we had, they had to come back to that, make sure they got the three things, the pipes done, the landscaping done, and the perimeter wall, like, that was part of the component design.
Right, so the decision of major site plan approval was issued was granted at the planning board. Do you want to tell you exactly?
July 1st.
Okay, so July, so.
It was received by the clerk on July 1st, 20 days.
No, yeah, yeah, okay. No, at this meeting on June 27th, 2022, the planning board voted to grant the major site plan approval, so June 27th.
Yeah, but you, your, your decision went into the planning board July 1st. It didn't become effective until after the 20 days, so that's still at 20.
Right, but you knew you had to do.
Yeah, no, I know, but we had started the work anyhow.
Yeah, so, yeah, so you're right, July 1st is when it was signed. But, you know, that work was also part of the prior.
I understand, yeah.
So.
But we couldn't start it until, remember, we had to wrap it all back into this one? So that it would get done and we weren't going back to the old plans, right?
Which it was, July 1st.
And the, the specific work that needs to be done, get going this fall, is what Ken hopes to do this fall, is specifically the perimeter fire protection service that goes around, it has to be extended around the area where the expansion will be before the expansion work can get done. So that's the first step. And then the foundation work per se isn't what you call traditional foundation work. It's a, it's an aggregate material that is driven into the ground to create strong soil. So we don't have a lot of excavation to do, quite frankly. It's.
So you wouldn't be starting any of the new drainage?
No, no.
And you can't actually, because you have to satisfy the condition, but the, the problem with the, with the gravity line over the gas, how does that impact the current system?
Considering we're in a, a current situation where it seems to be, we've been doing some test pits because we want to make sure we're not running into any conflicts again.
Well.
So we've been seeing, so we can, so we can, so what I'm getting to is the point is the groundwater is very low right now. It's been called good or bad, depending on what you're, what you think about water these days, right? It's very low. And so really that high point doesn't really have an issue in terms of backup into the system right now. Predict, I'm predicting that based on what I saw in the test pit last week. That being said, you're absolutely correct. We wouldn't proceed with the construction of the underground detention system expansion until that kink in the pipe, the vertical kink in the pipe is fixed.
But for the landscaping is really, there's nothing stopping you from putting the landscaping.
No, the landscaping is underway.
Yeah.
Of course, the, the final landscaping for the enhanced buffer zone and such like that should be after the, after the initial work is done, so that not perimeter work can be done.
Right.
So that's not being done, but all the restoration work, remediation work.
The three fixes.
The three, the three planting fixes, right. We have to have three planting fixes also. Those are underway and should be completed. I wouldn't be surprised if they're completed this week or early following.
So we have planning board meeting on the 1st of 7th. So as far as the landscaping, I mean, my, my thought is this, the drainage, there's nothing they can do at this point, because I asked them if they could move the pole. It's the same deal with National Grid. I asked them if they could redesign the fix so that they wouldn't be near the pole. And that's a time factor as well, and if the materials are available, et cetera. You'd have to design it, get the design approved, get Plasmonia out there to look at it, install it, whatever, or use. So I, I asked them several different ways to approach that, and that's the difficult one. Landscaping should be done. And as far as the noise barrier wall, you don't have much choice.
No, and I'll, I'll address that, you know, why we're.
The deadline is October 20th, for them to have modification application in the design. So the landscaping that we should be completed, is my opinion, before any building expansion.
If I may point out, the request for National Grid, you had the two companies mixed, by the way.
Yeah, alright.
The National Grid, in this case, National Grid Geoelectric, EverSource is the gas company. I believe I'm. The National Grid, in this case, National Grid, the electric, EverSource is the gas company, I believe I'm correct on that, I'm 100% sure. That, they both serve both, as you know, Tim. Their request for National Grid to secure that pole so the work can be done was the first thing that was done in July. That's how long it's been, it was a, that request has been in there for a while.
Oh, and the other, other option was to have.
It's not like we've been delaying that.
And we grew up their line, so there were four different avenues in our work.
So, does Fussin O'Neil need to review the two that were?
Yes.
To confirm what those were?
Yes. They, they did inspect the site and the reports back during construction, but it's still a requirement that the as-built be.
Can they do that in two weeks?
I can ask them, they already have a task authorization to do the work. My guess is it's likely because it's not within the field and it's not a big site. It's very fundamental.
So, my opinion is. That third outward structure kind of got somebody else's mercy, the landscaping should have been done. So I would. See if Fussin O'Neil can review this prior to our next meeting and we have the landscaping done prior to our next meeting. And then. Decide on whether you can start with the fire structure.
Could, we have a vote on a contingent that we complete those two things, if Fussin O'Neil reviews it, and we can complete the landscaping. Because I don't, I can't come back on the 7th. I'm unavailable, and I don't want to have to be here, you know, to present again. Oh, hey, I would have loved it tonight, except for that first two hours.
I have a question, why would you need to be here? Why can't we review the situation with this?
Well, you could, you could, but I requested that I do this one by zone, Karina said you might want to be here, and I agree with her, I should be.
I always recommend in person.
Yeah, and I don't mind that, but as long as you don't mind that I don't physically appear, as long as those two things are done.
I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, yeah, if those two things are done, you'll give us what we requested on the, the construction. Correct? Okay.
So, so the, just to be clear, where, what do, would you like to move forward on the construction?
We want to move forward on the construction of the petition, and most of it will be the foundation work and all the infusion into the ground. We won't do any of the drainage related to it because we can't, it'll be middle of winter.
So it wasn't some fire road or something?
The fire, the pipes, the water service for the fire protection system needs to be rebuilt around the expansion area.
That and the foundation.
Yeah.
That and the, yeah, it's the aggregate foundation, it gets driven into the ground.
So.
Pretty interesting thing, actually.
What's that happen to, it's just going to keep going.
We'd like to, yeah.
Well. I guess the, the expectation is that one of the, EverSource and Natural Grid meantime.
We'll get out there.
Come through for us.
Before we get to the stage above foundation.
See, I think that when I spoke to the contractor, he requested. Fire access road, water line. I'm not sure there was any discussion of the foundation. It was.
Yeah, we have to do that. Yeah, we have to do that before the ground freezes. That Sam wanted that, right?
Yeah, that's right, he wants to do it before those conditions. It's, it's. They do, the part of that process, they clear that area, they put down stones, stabilize it, so it doesn't have to be a exposed soil area, it's processed stone. It's exposed, and then they work in a specific area, or push down the aggregate.
Just to be very clear.
It's pretty interesting.
The site super, Michael Zani, sent me, I'm following up on this email, we expecting, we are expecting the water pipe in a few weeks and are looking to proceed. Once the new water pipe is in hand, this is the new water line around the site underneath the fire department access road. Installation of erosion control for phase three, tree removal and stump grinding, land clearing and grading. Previously, he also sent in an email to me, we are requesting permission to start the following, fire department access road around the proposed expansion. We'd like to stop this as soon as we are able to, as the current access road runs through the footprint of the expansion. Our goal is to run a new fire water service which is approximately 1100, when you need a new eight inch water under the access road. Backfilled to grade and installed binder before the Thanksgiving. Before the, after Thanksgiving, it becomes very difficult to get asphalt binder and grade a sturdy road. Number two, set up erosion control for phase three building expansion. This includes all temporary soil stockpile areas designated on the plan. Number three, tree removal and stump grinding as designated on the plan for the back parking lot. Number four, land clearing and grading of the proposed building footprint, and it's when I received these emails that I indicated to them that they cannot continue, they hadn't satisfied. The three drainage fixes and the three landscaping fixes. Bill, were there any other conditions that were related to prior to the building expansion happening?
No, it was just.
I don't believe so.
Just those.
It was just those mitigations. So, you're, what you're telling us is that. If the planning board says, okay, we can start construction, you're just going to keep going? Unless the planning board conditions that you can only do these three things until the National Grid, until drainage is satisfied?
Well, I, I talked to the contractor, not the site guy, the contractor that runs the company. And he told me today they want to be able to do the foundation and the infusion, and so that they're above ground. And that way, if National Grid comes, then they can move forward afterwards.
But I just, in all.
No, I'll, I'll finance, I'll have, I'll have, I'll have the construction guy write a letter on everything that they want, and he'll have it for the next week.
It'll, it's, Mike is the, Mike.
Mike is the guy that's on this.
Yeah, but he works, he works directly for Sam.
Well, Sam told me this morning.
Let me, let me just be clear so the planning board understands, Mike Zani is the site superintendent. He's on the site all the time, he's the contact person of emergency, he works for Columbia Construction. His boss, Sam Dettori.
Right.
Is the point of contact at the top of the region.
That's correct.
Sam's the guy I spoke to.
But Mike is the one corresponding with planning department, and Sam is as well, he follows up and is that okay?
Can you see if, can you see if Sam is on zone with you guys right now?
Is he deterred?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, he's, he's got his hand up, right? He wants us to stop, he wants to talk.
Yeah. Good thing I thought.
I probably got, I probably got 10 texts from him, probably.
I shut my phone off, so I didn't hear anything.
No, yeah, he's got something about planning completion.
Mr. Dettori?
About a week away, yeah.
Good evening.
Hello.
We can hear you, Sam.
How are you? Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, the, the things that Karina listed off are, are all correct, and Mike has them in the right order. For, before the winter, before Christmas, we want to do the, the water line is the fire line, the roadway. For the fire department, the rammed aggregate piers which support the foundation and the foundation, period. Then steel doesn't come for the job until the end of February. So the next step would be steel, and Scott is then correct in saying that between now and before we would put steel up. We are very hopeful that we get some positive response from either EverSource or N-Grid to either relocate the pole for us. Or lower the gas line for us, because we need somewhere in the neighborhood of eight to 12 inches to pass by, pass over. The gas line, which gives us the proper pitch that Scott needs for his design. But we will not, absolutely, and Karina is correct in saying, we will absolutely not do any additional drainage work. Not tie in any other drainage until that repair is made. Additionally, the as-bills were done for the two of the three repairs, and they're ready, and we should be sending them out. First thing tomorrow morning to Fussin O'Neil to review, but my understanding is that we are absolutely right on the money with all the corrections that we've made.
Just note that I got them this afternoon.
So that's, in a nutshell, that's exactly what we want to do, we're going to put the rammed aggregate piers, what Scott refers to is, is the. Stone that is rammed into the ground to make the ground support the foundation. The foundation is a four-foot frost wall foundation to support the building, and then we are stopping for the winter, that's as far as we can go.
So water line, roadway, aggregate piers, and the foundation.
Yes, ma'am.
I have suppression too.
Is that the water line?
Yeah.
As, as Mike pointed out, the erosion control system.
Yeah, and the erosion control has to be done as a prerequisite before we dig in the dirt, period. So that's, that's, that's a necessity that, you know, that's our, technically our first step, right?
Can I just get clarity on the, the gas and electric situation, so considering you asked in July. When's the last possible date that they can come out and you can actually do this repair work on the drainage system?
Well, it depends who wants to come first. And it depends when the frost goes into the ground. So what, what happened and what, and what specifically the issue is, is that the pole was only. When the pole was originally installed, it was only installed six feet in the ground. If it was much, if it were much deeper, we'd have a better chance, and typically what Scott's saying is, is correct. They would grab the pole, support it for us while we excavated next to it, installed our structures, backfilled and be on our way. But it's only buried in the ground six feet, so they said, no, we're not going to relocate it. Or we're not going to hold it for you, we would need to relocate, and we'll, we'll look at our design and we'll let you know. So that's when, as Scott stated, we said, well, wait a minute, let's hedge our, hedge our bet. And let's also talk to the gas company, because maybe they can respond sooner, drop this gas line for us, the eight to 12 inches that we need. Which then would allow us to give the proper pitch to the drain line that we need, and the design is then fulfilled.
So neither can be done once there's frost?
Yeah, you can't, once, once there's frost, we can't, they won't let us dig up, they won't let us do anything there. They'll tell us to go away until spring, I mean, it's, it's possible, Mrs. Luttrell, I, I, you know. Anything is, is possible, but depending on if there's enough frost in the ground, but we'll do it anytime. If they say they're going to come out and do it, we'll accommodate them, trust me. We're not going to tell them, we're not going to tell them no, but my belief is that, that once it gets to be a certain time of year. They will only come out on an emergency basis, they won't come out just to do what's, what's elective work in our, in their opinion.
Sam, didn't they tell you already that they're not going to do it before spring?
We believe that, based on what, what I said, Karina, before, we believe that they would, would not come out based on. You know, working with them before, I mean, I've waited, most recently, I've waited almost a year for a gas line to be relocated in wall fan. So we're hopeful now that, you know, things, things would go a lot better.
They realize it's not on Route 9, right?
I'm sorry?
They realize that the pole is not on Route 9, where your address, and it's internal to the private property.
Yes, I'm aware of that, but there's, it's still. Yes. Yeah, it's the pole, it's the last pole before the feed goes into the transformer on the southwest corner of the building.
Sometimes they still have to do the traffic setup, they need two months of signing.
I mean, if I knocked it down, they would probably repair it for me, but I don't, you know.
One of those trucks right into it?
No, the electricity for the building comes from that.
Right, no.
We still need that third mitigation complete from the original plan. And so they can't build the infrastructure, if the steel comes in February, it's, it's there until that third drain gets repaired. Period. And so that.
We, what we would, what we would like to say is that we can't do any drainage work until we can tie into the system. We can't tie into the system until the repair is made. We're not going to do any drainage work, and, and therefore, we're not going to, until the drainage is done, period.
Condition is also no building expansion work till the, those are done, so it's already like leaning into, all right. It's not just the drainage, it's building expansion.
I understand that the only drainage that goes into this new expansion of the underground system is the roof drainage. So.
The condition is.
Right, I just, I just want to like, I understand, I just.
I mean, you know, it, it wasn't done in the first place.
Correct.
So. It's like a cat, you know, it was supposed to be, yeah, penance. And I have to put it.
So, so would the board be okay with those one, two, three, four, five things? That they can move forward with, bringing for National Grid contention upon Fussin O'Neil signing off on this as, and the landscaping being done by the next meeting?
I would be knowing how they've proactively coming in and coming in asking for it, and the progress they've made with the retaining wall. They were going to get this far to begin with, as far as they have gotten, so I, I would be very comfortable.
Agreed.
Agreed. November 7th, November, so the landscaping.
Okay, we'll make sure there.
And I'll get this to Fussin O'Neil tomorrow.
Okay.
Ideally seven days before that.
Yeah, ideally.
Is it the 7th or the 11th? I'm sorry, 7th.
Building on what I was saying too, like, the 30-day extension for the, finish the plans for the, the sound wall.
If, if, if I could just elaborate on that.
Just before.
If you must.
Just know that it.
Keep on with it here.
After November 7th, the next meeting is November 21st.
Okay, alright. Okay, as you know, when we went to the board, what a hell, the last meeting, and you guys gave a recommendation that you wanted the longer wall. Rather than the one in, in the interior, and we, we asked to, which was fine. But then when we looked at the plans, because we hadn't really looked at the wetlands that closely, because we were anticipating that the one closer to the building was better. When we went out there and we watched, looked at where the, it was, the design and the layout would be, we'd actually be in the wetlands in several areas. Not in the buffer, not in the 100-foot setback, but in the wetlands. So what we did was we made some modifications to angle around the wetlands, to come down and come in in front of it, and then run in front of it along the roadway. If you go out there, the shoulder off the side of the road in between the wetlands, there's enough room to build it there. When we did the sound modeling though, to check, to make sure that what we were anticipating, we wanted to do because of the wetlands. The experts redid it, and they communicated last week that we added an extra section on the northernmost end.
20 feet.
Of the wall, it's 20 feet, 20 feet more to make sure we get the same effect, or similar effect to what we had before. And the other component of it is, once it's up, we got to run testing anyhow to make sure it works, so we may be tweaking it again later, who knows? So we need about 30 days, I think Scott is.
Right, I think we're, because we'll need a plan that will be submitted both to the board and to the conservation commission also. The conservation commission is really the longer preparation period.
And we, we.
You know, the weapon there.
Yeah, we, we knew once we looked at it, if we went into conservation with the original plan, they weren't going to approve it. So we got proactive, and we made the design, made the changes, they ran a lot of testing over several weeks, and the, the sound engineers got together. Last week to look at and run some final specs, and this works, there's one area, the little finger of wetland there. Where the original one was and this one was, but we can bridge it. The 20-foot spans, we'll put a foundation on either side of it, and it won't be in the wetlands. So this has a much higher potential success rate in conservation.
Do they, do you have a document that both noise experts agree to these changes? They both signed off on this plan?
Oh, the, from the experts?
Yeah.
I've been an email that I can send you, that they sent me on Friday, it was between them, confirming that this new model with the extension at the southern end. Gives you effectively the same, same results.
Just so the planning board is very aware, the blue line, right on the screen there.
Yep. That's the old one.
The one that's just straight and curves, yeah.
Except in the board, a health report, in the noise report, I think the wall already did this. So that's why I was asking you when you think this is a change. The wall didn't go straight.
I'd have to go back and look at her.
And I can show you.
The first version that you provided me had it going into the wetlands. So we may have made that change early on. You might be, you might be right on that. The change may have only, this, the change that you, that's, the official change may have only been the north end.
I got it here.
But from my standpoint.
Karina's rarely wrong.
Okay.
Yeah, no, figure seventeen. Figure seventeen shows a kind of angling, the way we have it now. Yeah.
All right.
So that, that line could be.
So we already had taken care of that.
Right.
Okay.
Oh yeah, okay. So this is the shortened.
Thank you.
Right, that's a different figure seventeen.
All right.
So you already had that curve in here.
Right.
You changed the door there aside.
Right.
To go along the road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is reflected in here.
Yeah, the change I was trying to get him to do is then push that out.
I just wanted to make sure the planning board was aware of what is coming.
Okay, and that, this is the submittal, because we won't be back to see you before the twenty first on the sound wall.
This is.
The thirty days I'm asking for is just to submit it to you.
Get the application.
Yeah.
For review for completeness, and then.
Yeah.
If it's all in order, and before you make the copy, you might wanna just come by my office and look at one set, we'll go through it, make sure everything's in it.
Yeah.
And then it'd be good to submit officially all the documents.
Okay.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's not really changing, um, sort of layout, anything on the site plan, or has it changed drainage at all?
So if there's a modification, application form.
Yeah.
The process is similar.
Would this be considered a minor modification from a site plan standpoint, even though it's a vertical element?
No, a modi- uh, a modification based on something during construction which you're in, is the same, uh, application as when you originally applied. So it's a, it's a modification to a major site plan. You already have a major site.
Right.
It's a modification.
Which requires.
Which requires it.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Mr. Murray?
No question.
No questions.
Mr. Murray, with your.
Everybody.
Recollection the same as what was presented.
See, we need to explain what this is an agreement, that this is an extension, we have a thirty day.
Extension to submit.
Thirty day extension.
Without our.
Which is from October thirtieth to November thirty. Right, to the new deadline, because in, no, October twentieth.
Would have been the twentieth, yeah, that's why I wanted to get in this week.
Twenty.
Right.
And just so it's clear that we have a, a date of.
I, I, I got it, thirty days is eleven twenty. Actually, because that's a Sunday.
So November twenty first.
Twenty first.
Which is a planning board meeting.
Right, well, we're gonna try to get it to you as soon as we can.
My motion, Matt Chair, that we extend the, um, submittal period for the sound wall for Ken's food, uh, an extra thirty days. Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor of Latrell, yes?
Yes.
Say yes.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
You really didn't think we had the sound wall back?
He was right.
No, we didn't think.
You guys made a lot of good progress.
Yeah.
Good partnership.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We just want to get the building up, pay for it all.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye, thanks.
Uh, master plan implementation committee, I think we just need to.
Yes.
Just messing it up a little bit. I'd like to make a motion that the planning board appoint, appoint William B. Warren to the master plan implementation committee per Mr. Warren's submitted request.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion, all in favor of Latrell, yes?
Yes, yes.
Stand, yes? Who can, yes?
Mary, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, the next discussion item, process for proposed Hopkinton Water, N W R A, we self wrote. I just had a question for, um, the board, and I don't know if we have any role in this, and that's what my question is. Um, originally on June fourteenth, Hopkinton came for the select board, asking to connect to N W R A through Hopkinton, I mean, through South Row. And the select board at that time, um, agreed the process would be that the public works plan board would review it in public, open meetings, and make a recommendation back to the select board. Since that time, somehow, the process has been removed from a public process and it has been locked behind closed doors and, uh, public, uh, somebody who's not with the town entity has been assigned the duty of reviewing this.
Heard this happen.
I'm not quite sure. And when it was presented at the select board meeting, public comment was shut down. So as a.
Sorry, this town select board?
Yes. So as a appointing authority on the public works planning board, I'm wondering if we have jurisdiction to comment on this process or not. That's my question, and that's what this discussion is.
I would think we have authority to comment on the process, yeah. It should be cool.
I'm completely mystified as to how we got to this point. Logistically, which doesn't seem like the proper procedures were followed for project. I would love to hear an explanation, so. In the select board. Sorry.
So should we write a letter to the select board and ask that we move back to the public process that was approved on June fourteen?
Yes.
Has some decision been rendered?
A decision as far as I know has not been rendered.
Okay, yeah, I definitely, I personally think we should intervene. This should absolutely, this is a very controversial situation with our water situation. Um, I think it's a really important public hearing process.
Yeah, I have a neighbor who's just concerned about the pipe being widened on last former roads of the park. The, uh, the golf course can get more water and she's worried about her water pressures. So, definitely, totally agree.
So this is a public hearing process to the select board?
No, it's the public works planning board, and they did have one meeting, a joint meeting with Capitol.
Yeah.
To start the discussions and lay out a path forward and.
Yeah.
The rug was pulled out from under the roof.
Yeah, interestingly, um, the chair of the public works planning board thought this was an issue that should go to the public works planning board, the public. And so there was joint, um, meeting with Capitol Planning, uh, one. And then there was some, seeking some clarification after they found out that there was an appointee that the, the process seemed to be kind of, uh, a little unclear. So the chairs of the two committees, um, public works planning board and Capitol Planning, wrote a letter to, um, select board for some clarification as to why it wasn't with them. It seemed to have not been with them. And what happened, I, I don't really know. But I would just say both chairs felt that it should be public process and they were willing to have joint meetings. That, that's good. I mean, you know, so.
Both chairs of.
Public Works Planning Board and Capitol Planning Committee, because of Capitol expense.
But see, if I'm hearing correctly, the select board took it away from those two boards contrary to what was agreed upon?
I don't know if it took it away, but I would say that's, that's what, what happened. And there, there was, um.
Or did the DPW essentially take the project away from?
No, no. In fact, um, there was a select board meet, I don't know, I don't know the dates, but there's a select board meeting where, um, uh, Mr. Butler was asked to come and, uh, give an update of sorts. It wasn't, it wasn't advertised as a hearing. Um, it was a presentation to the select board. Um, but it wasn't joint with Public Works Planning Board or Capitol Planning.
September twenty.
Sep- September twenty?
Yeah.
And it was about, seemed a long presentation, at least ninety minutes. I mean, there was a question and, you know, there was a lot of back and forth. Um, but so, uh, so that's even more confounding because, um, you know, I would just say, the public works planning board, at least in good faith, tried to have a public hearing. And I think that's a very good thing. Um, and Capitol's totally were willing to work, you know, jointly to carry that out. They thought this would be a great topic. And, um, now it's just unclear where we are with this.
So I think that we should, um, request that the process goes back to where the public works planning board in an open process where the citizens in town have a board to comment and find out what's going on.
Who's the current chair?
It's Mr. Boland, uh, Public Works Plan, it's Mr. Boland.
How often does that board reorganize?
So, um, we have had only, so since I've joined the board, uh, I have been appointed, we've had only the one meeting in July. And it, it, my opinion, it should have, there should have been a separate meeting first before joint meeting with Capitol, where they should have taken care of annual election. Um, if they have, uh, uh, somebody, you know, secretary or, or other positions, uh, but they, they haven't had that. Um, so that's also been difficult because, you know, while I support, you know, having public hearings, um, this would be with the, um, Capitol Planning, uh, I think there should be an annual election on every committee, actually. And in fact, on that note, I did, um, confirm with town clerk that most committees are following that. It's just a good practice. I don't think it's gonna fall off, um, but it's a practice to have an annual election report.
Yeah, because I think even shops are pretty sure, I don't have meetings that's memorized, but I'm pretty sure shops, it's vote, at least voted to reappoint, reorganize, select, elect, chair, raise chair, et cetera.
Yeah, this is difficult because there's been so few meetings. I honestly don't know when the last election was, and. Sammy, was it Mr. Boland who presented at the select board meeting, or Mr. Butler? No, Mr. Butler. In, in fact, yeah, the, the two committees were, were not asked to attend.
Sorry, the, the public works planning board currently is Mr. Stiver, Mr. Boland, yourself.
Mark Burmazi. And, um, Jim Hardy. And I think Mr. Hardy couldn't make it, so either then or yet.
I'm just, I'm sorry for my confusion, but Mr. Butler is involved in what capacity? Just as a concerned citizen?
So my, my understanding is he did some work on the Ashland, um, water and, and has a good sense of, um, you know, could take a, sort of, take a look at this. As you might remember, um, the, I don't know what the actual ask was, but, um, our water consultant on fire is, is, is also a consultant for Hopkinton, which, you know, might have been a very good move for Hopkinton, but I think that, um, there was concern that he was.
He's working for him.
He's working for Hopkinton. So South Row needed somebody, you know, to evaluate. Um, and my impression was for Mr. Butler to do, you know, he would be doing the first line of, of defense. And I think that is what he presented, uh, when he met back for the select board. Uh, I wish it was back to the committee where, you know, which was, has taken it up. But, um, his recommendation among a lot of things, because it was quite a long presentation, is, uh, that there should be, I think, an engineer, you know, a peer review. Yeah.
Well, I'd just like to say, I think that appointing Mr. Murray out to the board is one of the best things we've ever had. And so thank you very much.
Second shot.
Thank you.
So we can write a letter to the, so that's the select board.
So Mr. Butler had, wasn't in a role, he volunteered to do the research, to provide a presentation?
It's unclear how, how he got that. And he may do a fabulous job and he has a lot of knowledge on that, but it should be an open process.
He was a chair of the. Well, I think the recommendation, I did see some correspondence between the chair of Capitol Planning and Public Works Planning Board, looked like they were trying to arrange another hearing. And we're also uncertain of Mr. Butler's role. And I made the recommendation that why doesn't Mr. Butler come to the public hearing? Um, but that didn't happen, he went to the select board instead.
All right, on the list, on the list. The next item, uh, discussion, planning board meeting schedule.
So, uh, how are you putting together this anticipated planning board schedule for twenty twenty-three? It's very similar to last year's. Um, we try to avoid school vacations, holidays, significant events, like soup bowl, religious holidays, like Rosh Hashanah. We do have one meeting in September scheduled on the twenty-fifth, which is.
Well, it should change.
Yeah, I think that's a pretty important.
Yeah.
So we could, um, not have that meeting, because that's, we have a meeting two weeks before that and two weeks after that.
Oh, really?
Oh, I suppose it could be moved to October the second.
Yeah.
So move September twenty-fifth. To October second.
And I can tell you that I already have a conflict for January ninth, I'll be on vacation.
So?
January.
Zoom with your relatives?
Not a chance. Are you for a decade? Just as long as we don't have multiple conflicts that day.
So I'll be here, was it June?
It was January nine.
January second or January ninth?
January ninth.
We'll still have more.
And we'll just give you a moment.
With the impression. That'll be my first time at some meeting.
So.
Mr. Mel.
Just kidding, you got a bunch of, like, still suffering.
Now we have one seventy minutes after. After the finish. So, do you want me to do the planning report?
Yeah.
Can I just add something? Um, just notice that the, um, Hopkinton Water, um, topic is on the select board, um, for tomorrow in executive session. Session.
Very good observation. Thank you for.
Well, I have, I have a little help on my test. Okay, planning report. We received the, um, updated National Grid Vegetation Management Plan that had the changes in it that were, um, agreed to at the joint meeting with the select board and the planning board. And Mark Cipoll executed it and provided us a copy. So that's a good step. Um, I've asked the, uh, open space monitoring consultant to provide us a quick presentation on the fiscal year twenty-two report, usually ends up around this timeframe. Um, they are available for November seventh, if you'd like us to pick that off the agenda for the second. Mimi had invited, uh, Shopsey to a joint meeting with the planning board on November seventh to discuss MBTA communities, to start getting the ball rolling on that.
I had a question about that. So am I, maybe I should be asking Mr. Edgar, in a joint meeting, I count towards both quarters or? In a joint meeting, I count towards both corners, or do I only count toward one, towards corners? One towards corner? Am I now, I'll stop here. I just want to, I'll check and make sure, I'll check with Dorian tomorrow, I'll make sure that, that I'm not needed for a corner on Shopsey. Or worst case scenario, you can spare me.
So it's, it's just an informal discussion to get things started.
I just want to make sure the shop stays a corner.
Yeah. To see where we are in, you know.
Worst case scenario, I would just step off the planning board or for that agenda item. Okay, sorry, thank you.
On that same note, Colleen sent an email to Dorian about some complete students grants that are available to assist with the town working and getting things going, we need to consult and help do what's needed for the next January twenty-fourth deadline. So, Colleen's working on that, she talked to Dorian today. But I'd say Colleen's kind of spearheading that a little bit, so we'll see what comes of that.
As far as I can tell, the new, so we, we sent comments to the state and the new guidelines were not helpful to us at all. Except for they do allow ten percent, I think, of all.
Okay. Yep, that was a. And also, there was an article in my South Row regarding tax, so any truck exclusion on Black Street, so I could then have a planning report. If you hadn't seen that article, so you can look back there, gives a good synopsis of what's happening with those. What, update on the special town meeting? Sorry, unfortunately, I, I, me, we probably have more information, but tree protection by law failed to pass town vote, although the planning board report recommending it was filed with the town clerk today, so that even though it's not quite such a general bylaw, but the following process, as if it's a zoning amendment, there should be no question if it does come back in the interim votes as a report in support of it. And for my new street road initiative, that was in Denver postponed, and we also submitted the planning board report to town meeting, that planning board supported it, found it on record, so if there's ever any question that can be pursued. But that one didn't fail.
And I wanted to apologize to the board for not getting this across the finish line, and I've been working on it a long time.
No need. You do wonderful work, thank you.
Those questions, the questions that were coming through.
Very hard to anticipate.
Yeah.
Hopefully, the board will agree to.
Yeah.
It would be great to have a discussion on that, maybe, for each other for November seventh, because I think the, the policies that we discussed need to start to be drafted, and maybe we can discuss what next steps are for both.
Okay. Okay, and as you say that, we need to accept, the planning board needs to accept the outdoor rules and regulations for outdoor elimination, outdoor, the outdoor elimination rules and rights from when that by law passed, there was, there was a section on enforcement that we were working out with my, Marty was working out with Marty Hill at the select board at the time. So, maybe we can get that going on November seventh or November twenty-first? To just send that out to everybody, you can look at it, and you can see if you just want to accept it that way, because you can change it again.
Right, because it's a policy, right?
But right now, it's still.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Jack, so it can always be tweaked later, but if we get something on record, we'll have that to him, I've been handing the draft updates. Then the other thing is the downtown district design guidelines. That's in the same, that's in the same folder, because we have a couple interested parties that are in the downtown district now to change the use of some of those buildings, and add to use. And I have the draft guidelines, which is what I'm going by, but once, and again, those can be tweaked, but we need to accept those. So if I can get those out to you guys for November seventh, we can get those on the agenda. And at least get those accepted, and then if you want to change them, or anyone has an issue.
Just back to Article one, maybe you did a great job with the tough questions, you stay very composed, you worked with the board very well. Second.
It was a tough round.
It was a very tough round. Stayed very composed and didn't get flustered.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we're sorry, Mimi, that it didn't pass. I think it's the intent and obviously, what our goal is to protect our public trees, and I think it just, it unfortunately gets really misconstrued around drift lines and private property and
Suburban system.
and septic systems, so we, I don't know what it means, but you did a really great job, you're very composed, and my second, Mr. Mills. Compliment. To bring things.
That sounds good.
But every time we get stronger. Yeah. Eventually, just keep hammering away.
So make a motion, we approve the minutes from September twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, is ready?
Second.
Great motion in a second, any discussion? The trial would stand.
Yes, Stein, yes?
Koolihan, yes.
Mary, yes.
Make a motion, we accept the minutes from September twenty-sixth.
No, we don't have those, that's it. We have a little transition from Kate Douglas to a meeting reporting clerk, so it takes a little time to get those out of the queue. Yeah. We'll have a bunch at the next meeting.
Next meeting, November second, November twenty-first, December twelfth.
November seventh, I think, is that what you said, in a second?
Well, you, you read all the reasons.
November seventh.
Yeah, I just read second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion, all in favor of the trial, yes?
Yes, Stein, yes?
Koolihan, yes?
Mary, yes. There we go, Jessica, yeah, I'm here by ten o'clock.
You gonna bang your gavel?
Oh. Planning board is adjourned.
Own it, Mimi.